I'm going to call the meeting to order. And if you would all please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, the first order of business is approving a minutes from the May 23 workshop meeting and the June 4 special workshop meeting that we had. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Second. Thank you. I just, there were two small typos.
Ha.
Ha was one, and then it's just an extra S in ha. But they're just literally typos. Any other edits or discussion?
No, no, I saw it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Okay, that's good. Okay, that's awesome. All right, and so the first item of regular business is the recommended library trustee, Grace Kachigian.
Kachigian, yes.
It's close.
That's pretty good.
First of all, thank you very much for coming. Thank you for, Anna Gregg is the president of the board of the library. So thank you, Anna, for being here. And so we just wanted an opportunity to meet you and to ask just a couple of questions. And then it is our role as the village board to formally appoint you to the library board. So with that, I'm going to ask any trustees, if you have any questions you'd like to ask.
I say why drew you to want to join the board for the library?
Yeah, good question. So obviously, I live here and I've got three young children and utilize the library all the time. And I'm a CPA, you know, by profession and almost 13 years of experience in the industry. So I wanted to give back to the community and it just seemed like the right place to do that.
And are you working for a CPA firm?
I am. Kate Hime-Gee, one of the eight four.
Yes, you said that one. That's wonderful. Any other, any other questions? I see that you've been involved, that you've used the library. It sounds like a fair bit, so you're familiar with it.
Exactly, exactly. Happy to give back to the community.
That's terrific. And certainly, the CPA background is something that every board hopes to have, so.
Yes, exactly.
Any other, any other questions? Well, hearing none, I will take a motion to appoint Grace Kachigian. Say your name again.
That's good, Kachigian.
Kachigian. To the library board.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion or questions? Just I'm happy that you're joining.
Thank you, and thanks for having me today.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful, thank you.
Congratulations.
As always, you are welcome to stay. But that concludes the library business, so you are welcome to pass.
Three little ones.
I was going to say, now you're aging your three. That's a lot going on. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Oh, Grace, at some point, you'll just need to come back and sign your own office.
I'll need to do an office within 30 days. So just at some point, you can either shoot me an email or you can make an appointment, or you can pop in anytime between 11:00 and 12:00. But I understand that just.
Should we work it out? Sounds good. Thanks again.
Congratulations.
Wonderful. And Anna, thank you, and we're excited to, for those who didn't, if I didn't articulate, Grace, Don O'Shea resigned from the board and Grace, Grace's position, she will be taking over the remainder of Don's term. And I believe his term ends May 2025. And so that's the position that she will fill. So that is, that's terrific. Okay.
I'm going to drop off, but thanks, everyone. I appreciate your support, Grace.
Thanks, Anna.
Okay, the next item of business. Okay, now we get into the other fun stuff. Sorry, I'm getting everything tied up. So the next item of business is the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Red Hook related to the town sewer district. I did not, did you print out copies? Yes, okay, sorry, mine's probably in, I've read this so many times.
Karen, would you like mine? I've got my district.
No, no, you can, you can keep yours. I'm sure it's in my box. Aye, as I say, I've read it many, many times. And the, so there are two things. The main purpose of why we are doing this tonight is because the town is applying for an intermunicipal grant for their sewer district. They are doing a number of things at the same time. They haven't yet created the sewer district, so they are in the process of doing that. And one of the things, at our last meeting, we consented to allow the town to be the lead agency on seeker for the town sewer district. As you also received documentation that they approved that and found no, they declared a negative declaration. I think I'm saying that wrong, but in the seeker, they determined it was negative declaration. And that had to be done first. This intermunicipal agreement is the basis on which the village will supply the sewer services to the town. This is not, does not have to be the be all and end all. If we discover that there are other things that we would like to add or change, we certainly have that opportunity. Even after things are up and running, we can always adjust the intermunicipal agreement. It requires an approval by the village and town boards. But the whole, sort of the underlying premise from my standpoint was to ensure that all the costs associated with the town sewer will be paid for by the town. We, the village, are not allowed by law to bond for a capital project that's not within the village. So that is something that the town is required to do. And so this agreement really just gives a framework for the village to provide the 50,000 gallons per day capacity that the town has requested. And I know, I know that at least two of you have read this document deeply, in addition to myself. And I know, for example, Mel Corca had asked a question about if, if the discharge from the town doesn't meet our requirement, do we have the capacity to add fines to that? And that is something that we can, through the O&M plan that we have and through further, further review, we can add that to the agreement. There is in the agreement, if there are any costs or violations of any state permit or Department of Health permits that is caused by town discharge, the town will pay for all those costs. That is in the document. And so, any other, any other questions or concerns?
I have a lot of questions sort of going through it, but I don't know necessarily, since I know this isn't the final draft, if this would be like the ready to sort of go through my like line item of questions. A lot of it had to do with like clarifying definitions, things in regard to, like, there's a couple of places that says like, if the village is requested or we obligated to do whatever it is that we're requested.
If it's, if it's a request, no, we're not obligated.
Okay. And then.
I know, for example, there was, there was one where the town could basically deputize a village employee to do.
Like construction and things like that.
Something like that, yeah. At this moment, the intention is for the town to, well, and again, part of it is it depends on what the final project ends up being and how that works. There's a logical efficiency if the construction is all done together. And that's not clear whether or not it will be done together sort of all under the auspices of the village or whether the town will do their construction and the village will do our construction. You will note that in, in the intermunicipal agreement, there is, if that happens, the village will oversee and the cost of that oversight is borne by the town. So there, some of it is allowing for a certain amount of flexibility because we don't have the details of the final projects. And obviously, the town has to create their sewer district first. So some, again, some of those details and some of the definitions, if it's a request, we don't have to say yes. If it's there, as I say, the fundamental idea is that the town is requesting connection to our sewer system. They are requesting that we do the operations and maintenance of their, how. And you'll note that in there, it's basically laid out that the village will charge the town sewer district for the cost of the O&M. And it's on the town to figure out how they want to distribute it to their, to their users.
I was looking at some of the definitions and noticing that the force main is not actually connected to any part of the systems that are defined out. It's left specifically out of the step collection component and wondering where, and then it's also not in the other component. So it's related. Left out, and then it's not the actual facility. So who's responsible for the force main at this point in the?
So at this, at this point in time, what the, what the town is proposing is that they would do, they would do a force main from the village town line, from there directly to the wastewater treatment plant. So the construction of that would be the responsibility of the town. The cost of the construction of that would be the responsibility of the town. But you make a good point in terms of it should be, and it probably ends up being a, well, it's part of the collection system, actually. So it really should be identified as part of the collection system. It just, it's obviously not, not clearly spelled out, but it is, it is part of the collection system. So I, yes, I would say based on, you know, and again, I apologize for the, for the, not a lot of time to go through all the details. I think if you're comfortable with the overview and the general sense of what is trying to be done, there's definitely an opportunity for some adjustments and clarifications going forward. Steve, I see you have your finger.
So, I mean, just looking at the cost, that was the one thing that kind of struck me. You know, it talks about proportional, which, you know, is a logical way to allocate costs when you have multiple users on the system. But one of the things which seems likely is that there will be an increase in administrative overhead for the village to be able to manage that process. Is it contemplated that there be some sort of an administrative charge on top of the operations and maintenance itself? This again, may not be something which is sort of directly identifiable cost in O&M, but, you know, again, part of the finance function here in the village and other administrative functions as well that go with the support it now will be at a higher level for this larger system with multiple users.
Yes, though that, one of the reasons why it's in the IMA that the village for O&M in particular will be charging the town sewer district for the total cost so that they are dealing with their billing, et cetera. So that, that will minimize the additional administrative cost. But yes, it is the intention that all costs associated with the town supplying the town with sewer service will be, will be covered by the town, the town users. But yes, that's.
It will be captured in the operation.
It will be captured in the operation and maintenance. Yes, well said, thank you.
And the other, is there a date by which the project budget that's exhibit A will be delivered?
So it is not, for this IMA, those costs have not been coordinated. The town has a map planning report that has some early assumptions. Our engineering report has higher numbers. These are all estimates because we don't know. For anyone who's been paying attention to the Tivoli Sewer Project, their costs just went up rather dramatically. So the coordinating of those, and from my standpoint, the village part, for the town, what's relevant is what is the cost of that 50,000 gallons a day capacity? And then what the village does is on the village. And so that's the piece of separating those two. I don't, we will, the next discussion is on our engineering report and we will be using the numbers that have been established in those, in that engineering report for what we submit to the funding agencies.
And then the last, well, I've got a lot of questions. It's a very dense document, obviously. Under project engineering, it says each party will be responsible for costs for preliminary engineering reports. Then talks about after the effective date, you know, there's a different arrangement. So I guess my question is, can the village recapture some of those costs that go into that preliminary engineering that's dedicated towards the town's users?
The idea behind that is that our preliminary engineering report for our project will be paid for by the village. The town's preliminary, you know, their map planning report will be paid for by the town. Any incorporation of the town into the village's project will be covered by the town because that's a cost associated with the town's project.
So this preliminary engineering, as it refers to it, is for the village's expansion, not for anything to do with the town?
Correct, yes.
I mean, that could be clarified if it can.
Yes, absolutely. It's a little confusing to me because it, because really, we are doing a project, they are doing a project. We will do them at the same time. So there's a certain linking of them. But the fundamental is that everything associated with the town project will be paid for by the town.
And that makes sense, but just kind of remove that and make it clear, that would be, I think, helpful if that were spelled out in that section.
Yes, agreed. And I think as we, as we finalize more of that, it will make it easier to be clearer in the IMA. So I would, I would say it's not likely this is our final version.
I do have another question. Just before project engineering, so section eight, part E, it steps through what we're doing with our, like, with our funding proceeds and where they're going to be held and a process that we have to go through for the expansion system or for phase two. And I'm not necessarily sure why the town needs to be notified or why they have a say in what allocable costs that we have for our own improvements and like notifying them of withdrawals.
What section are you on?
Section eight, E. So it says, "Any funding proceeds for the village project improvements not required to be held by the funding agency for dispersment shall be placed in an escrow available to be drawn by the village for allocable costs for the village project improvements. And the village shall be authorized to provide dispersment for all funds upon prior notice to the town." If it's just for village improvements, why are we being held responsible for notify the town since the funds are for a village-specific project and used for a village-specific project?
That is, that is a very reasonable observation and I will tell you that I had actually asked that to be taken out. And for all the details that I did, I missed that one. So I am going to, yeah. To your point, what we do with our funds is not relevant. So we will take that section out.
All of E?
No, E up to the.
Let's see. Yeah, each party shall maintain records of all dispersments, provide records to each other. The village shall maintain detailed records for each budget category, including allocation to village and town.
Yeah, I mean, I think I would take it out through dispersments of such ones to the other. I don't think that's necessary. I think that the, because it's intermingled, I do think that the, there is a responsibility that we have to share, you know, what, how we are determining the cost to them. If it were a completely separate cost, if, for example, we were building them a separate plant, that would be easier. But it is co-mingled, so there will have to be some co-mingling. But yeah, that, to your point, the, what, how we, how we raise our funds, how we spend our funds, that's entirely on us and actually, the town, the town does not have any oversight of that. So thank you for pointing that out.
Welcome.
Any other questions for this evening? We can also have, down the road at an appropriate moment, we can have a workshop where we really, all of us together can go through them or we can, we can do it, you know, a couple at a time. But I think, otherwise, I think it's a, it's a good document that allows us to move forward, that allows us to support the town in their efforts to get some grant funding, which is good for everybody. And thank you for digging into it. That's appreciated. Any other questions at the moment? So with that, I'll take a motion to, oh gosh, I think the motion needs to be to authorize me to sign the intermunicipal agreement for the town of Red Hook related town sewer district. Anybody want?
Just a kind of procedural question. If there's changes that were made, would that be made first? Then kind of authorizing it to be signed after that point or?
Yes, so let me clarify. So the, the section of eight, E, that we agreed we would take out is the motion, so I guess I'm making them, can I make a motion to authorize me? So I'm asking for a motion to authorize me to sign the document after the revision that we agreed on. Does that answer your question?
And if there, I mean, we talked about some other things as well. So we talked about this being a document that could be changed in some ways as we kind of workshop through that. So I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, I mean, for, for me, I think the section about, the section about the village's funding, et cetera, I think that's one that we should take out now. I think the others, I think, I think we can, we can propose those later. That would be my thought on that.
Can there be some language that is added here saying that, and again, it may be there because I, you know, I. It can be, it does say it can be amended, I know that.
Yes, yes, it does. And, and an amendment would take an approval by the village board and the town to order. Yeah. So if that, would anyone like to make the motion that I put forth? So moved, thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Looking forward to workshopping the IMA.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, the next item is a resolution around our sewer phase two project. So you, you do have a copy of the engineering report. And for those who are interested, there's a link on the web, on the village website. In total, it's 254, 45 pages long. So we chose not to print out any, any of those. Without the appendices and exhibits, it's 41 pages long. But the overall summary is that the phase two is proposing to add an additional 170 properties within the village and adding, which leads to adding an additional 175,000 gallons per day capacity to the existing wastewater treatment operation. And in addition to that, the 50,000 gallon per day dedicated capacity requested by the town of Red Hook. It includes several potential housing projects. The Cookingham East project, Anderson Commons, and also the Ross, Ross property, which is right next to the Cookingham East property. The estimate, in the engineering report, having gone through all the details associated with and coming up with the best probable cost estimate, I believe was the terminology. Actually, I have 19.7, I believe it's 19.5 million, which is certainly a daunting number. However, what, what I, what the resolution is about is to submit the sewer phase two project for listing on the Clean Water, I have it written here somewhere, State Revolving Fund Intended Use Plan. That proposal or for, submission for listing is due Friday, June 14. And it does not commit us to this project. It does not commit us to any project. However, if we were to decide we wanted to go bigger, which is certainly not likely, the funding would not increase. Usually, the funding is for a percentage of the project that you have listed. So the recommendation is to go for the bigger project that you think you might do and then go, and then bring it back if that's what you choose to do. So for example, if the town of Red Hook does not succeed in establishing their sewer district, we would not, we would not build the 50,000 gallon per day capacity. If any one of the development projects choose not to proceed, not to commit at some point, we would, we would not build that capacity. Or if we were to choose to reduce the size of the, of the sewer map that we have, that's part of the, that's, that's part of the engineering report, we would just pull back and make a smaller project. But we, whether or not the funding agencies reduce it to the percentage of your total project, I'm not sure. What I know is they never go higher than what they've initially given you. So unless you reapply, which is a whole nother exercise. So I'm going to read the resolution as written and then we can have a discussion. Resolution to authorize submission of sewer phase two project for listing on the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Intended Use Plan. Whereas the village of Red Hook plans to expand the sewer use area beyond the current area and whereas the village engineer, Delaware Engineering, has completed an engineering report for this project to expand the current sewer use area to include an additional 170 properties, adding an additional 175,000 gallons per day capacity to the existing wastewater treatment plant operation. And whereas the town of Red Hook has requested 50,000 gallons per day dedicated capacity to service their traditional neighborhood district to the south of the village for their proposed sewer district that is currently in the process of being formed, for which the town would contribute the capital costs associated with that construction. And whereas there are several potential housing projects and development in the village which are made possible by being on this village sewer system. And whereas the probable cost of the total project, including the town of Red Hook's 50,000 gallon per day dedicated capacity is estimated at 19.5 million. And whereas to receive grant funding for this infrastructure expansion from New York State's Clean Water State Revolving Fund, the project needs to be reviewed and listed on their intended use plan. And whereas this action does not commit the village to proceed with the project or exactly as it is proposed in the engineering report, but there is a benefit to proposing the largest option being considered because the funding is a percentage of the total project cost and will not be increased if the project size or project costs increase. Now therefore, be it resolved, the village board of trustees authorizes the mayor to submit the sewer phase two project for listing on the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Intended Use Plan due on June 14, 2024. May I have a motion to approve? May I have a motion to approve this resolution, which is resolution number 18?
Salute.
Thank you, Kim. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Questions, discussion? No questions, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then just to clarify, the, the primary funding that we hope to get would be the bill funding, which is the bipartisan infrastructure law funding. And I believe they fund up to 50% of infrastructure projects. So once listed, we'll presumably find out in the fall. That is what the timing has been in the past. Okay, thank you very much. There are no budget adjustments for this evening. We are in the process of finalizing, getting all the invoices, et cetera, for our fiscal year, which ended in the end of May. So I will certainly have budget adjustments at our July meeting. And then the next meeting, the workshop is going to be June 20th, which is the, is a week earlier than it would normally be if we followed the normal schedule. And then the next board meeting is July 15th, which is actually the third Monday. It just works better for the July calendar because there are five Mondays in July. And so the next item is the treasurer's report. Kim, could you perhaps go? Flag our treasurer who's diligently working in her office to get, get everything prepared for that? So we'll take a brief pause while we wait for our wonderful treasurer. Oh, sure, we could do that. So we'll, we'll switch around to a little public comment. Would either of you?
How was just going on?
Whatever you'd like.
I'm opposed to all of it.
You're opposed to all of it?
Like nothing, she tied nothing in with the town.
I'm sorry.
The liability is incredible.
Could you just add, her formality, could you just?
George Peet.
Who you are and where you, where you live.
15 Cherry Street. I think it's a huge liability. If the system goes down, we have a problem, where does that leave us? They're going to, they're going to sue your, your pants off.
In the intermunicipal agreement, it says they can't do that.
I don't care what it says, I'm just saying what's going to happen.
Okay.
You know, I was at the meeting with the town when they explained how this was going to work. They have no clue what they're talking about. A year they've been looking at this, a whole year, nobody called the village. They said, I mean, how can you plan anything without talking to the other party? So there are going to be a lot of surprises, and I think you're leaving yourself wide open for it. And you talk about definitions, whoa. There's implementing these deals and, and definitions. And if there's a problem down the line, let's say that the amount of discharge exceeds some kind of new regulation, who's holding the bag now? The town can say, well, you failed on your end, and that's not, you know, viable. And it's probably going to happen. On the other part, and the expansion of the system, I think that's foolish. Because again, the numbers aren't there, you have no idea where you're going with it. I don't think, I want to, I don't want to get a wet street from me. And that's what it's going to be. I mean, I have no idea what kind of apartments they're talking about, how many people are going to be there, what kind of people are going to be there, whether they can afford to live there, or they're going to end up bailing out on the system. And the village is going to end up holding the bag. So I, I think, I think the liability you put yourself into is well above, above and beyond, which makes any sense. And when we're talking about things that we're talking about doing, the runway to behind the stores up there to come into Cherry Street, to extend Gray Street, now you're going to have some of us living right next to a bypass. I mean, if we have an unofficial bypass, now you're going to have an official bypass, traffic running parallel to nine, and using it, that whole thing as a cut, as a, as a roundabout to get past, you know, to avoid the light in the village. You know, and then they, and taking parking away from stores that you, you want big deal, you want parking in the back, you take their parking away. You're going to bring big traffic into the center, the left side, the left center of the village, which makes no sense at all. And I, the driveway that's there now from CVS, which was illegal, I was, because I got on the zoning board, because somebody admitted it to me later, you can't have a business entrance into an intersection. Now you got, now you got four roads coming in, basically their road coming out the back of CVS. You got three streets plus two driveways within 10 feet. You know, it's, it shouldn't have been passed back in the day, which is before I got on the board, I made too much noise about it. But, you know, this is just going to create, now you're putting a regular road in there. So it's not just bypassing it by taking, going through somebody's parking lot. Now you're running, ran them right through the village. And you're concerned about the exit traffic coming out of the pot store. Yeah, they're going to run them right down. This makes no sense at all. It's nice to think about these things maybe, but, you know, before you waste any time and money engineering it, I think you really got to talk to the people. And again, unfortunately, the people in the village don't seem to care until it's a problem. Because I've been coming to meetings for 25 years, and generally speaking, for 25 years, I was only here. And you talk to anybody about the water project out there on my street, or the store, or the water project in the other part of town, or the store project, they have no idea what's going on. Not your fault, but this is the problem you're going to end up with. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Appreciate it. Anything, no?
He said it all.
Okay. Anyone on Zoom would like to add a public comment? Okay, take that as a, we're all good on public comment. With that, we have, we're ready for the treasurer's report.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
You're welcome. Treasurer's report for the month, for the month ending 5/31/2024. Here's the balances in our different funds. General Fund has $777,399.34. Water Fund, $444,916.92. Payroll Clearing Account, $39,152.54. Sewer Fund, $62,795.38. Villatree, $9,692.50. Health Insurance, $12,719.32. And our petty cash has $52.93. The following are the reserve checking balances, and these are accounts held in M&amp;T Bank, Fire Department, The Police Department, $17,580.89. USDA, $143,049.61. Highway has $29,530.31. Snow Reserve, $3,378.13. Tower, $18,244.19. Unemployment, $7,236.73. Court Reserve, $3,397.82. And the Office Reserve, broke a thousand this month at $1,001.77. Our monthly expenses for May, General Fund, $162,824.69. Water Fund, $109,274.59. Payroll Clearing Account had $2,566.79. And the Sewer Fund, $18,139.194. And on a fiscal note, our tax bills went out at the beginning of the month, so people are starting to come in and pay their, their taxes for this year.
Wonderful. Any questions for the treasurer? Hearing none, motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Laura.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lori. Okay, and now it is time for my reports. The police report for the month of May, there were 380 incidents. Village of Red Hook, 233. Town of Red Hook, 131. Village of Tivoli, 16. There were 88 water tower security checks. There were 84 uniform traffic tickets. 44 in the Village of Red Hook, 33 in the Town of Red Hook, and seven in the Village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were 22 in the Village of Red Hook, one in the Town of Red Hook, and three in the Village of Tivoli. And there were six arrests, one in the Village of Red Hook, five in the Town of Red Hook, and none in the Village of Tivoli. Fire, Fire Department report, I do not have an updated report. And then, all right, so I now have multiple reports. Going to start with the library report. The Reddick Public Library held their regular board meeting on Thursday, May 16th. I was not able to attend as I was at the New York Council of Mayors Conference. The Policy Committee reviewed several policy updates, including law enforcement, confidentiality, non-resident borrower card, and customer service. I will share, at the end of my report, I do indicate where on the library's website you can find, you can find these policies. Finance Treasurer's report, a simple IRA plan was presented. It includes a requirement of being at the library for two years before being vested. It assumes a year-over-year increase in salary every year. The cost in year three is projected at $5,574 with those assumptions. I don't know if they, if, what the discussion was and whether or not that was passed. I will have that information for the next meeting. Cash balance at the end of April is reported to be $700,702,523.66. April, January through April 2024, net cash, net revenue less adjustments, was $87,385.13. Cash at the beginning of January was $615,138.53. And their balance sheet shows the current assets at the cash balance at the end of the year. Fixed assets at $847,055.96. For total assets of $1,549,579.62. Current liabilities are $297,995.90, which is primarily the construction loan. Long-term liabilities are $218,273.82, which are non-current government assets. The total equity at $133,309.90. Budget versus actuals through April, the revenue is running a little over budget and the expenses are running a little under budget. The budget versus the actual was not, it was versus the full year budget, so it's a little hard to tell, but that, I believe, is a correct assumption. The Director's Report, attendees for programs grew from March to April, as did library foot traffic. Circulation is up versus last year, both in physical and e-circulation for the month of April. Various programs are coming up, including Introduction to Spanish, Sherlock Holmes Escape Room, Read Together Art Project Portraits, Summer Reading, and a few others. The stucco replacement and porch projects went out for bid. There was a walkthrough on May 15. Expected completion by the end of this summer. I'm not sure when the bid award, or when the bid date, due date is. The May 21st vote for a $16,000 increase in State Education Law 259 funding did pass. From the Board of Directors, the Library Board voted to recommend Grace Catchigan? Catch, Catchigan? I'll get it. To fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Don O'Shea. And so these board documents can be located on the library website under Board of Trustees. And the link to the board packet is actually embedded in the text towards the bottom of the page. Their next meeting is Thursday, June 20th at 6:30. And the committee, committee meeting schedule is on the library calendar on their website. That is my library report. The next thing, I, I just want to read a note that I received from the, from Jennifer Van Vories, the Secretary of the Red Hook Rotary. She said, Dear Mayor and team, thank you for all your support and participation that helped our community enjoy an amazing apple blossom day. We all enjoyed a full day of music, entertainment, activities, and vendors. With great appreciation, Jennifer Van Vories, Secretary, Amaretto Rotary. I thought that was a very nice note and wanted to share it with the team. Okay. I have a variety of other items that I cover. Insurance, I had mentioned that the NYMER insurance, which is, it's under the budget item called unallocated insurance. And so it is our general liability, it's law enforcement, it's auto insurance, it's umbrella. I know there are a couple of things in there. June 1 is the renewal, and that has been received. The cost without cyber insurance is $82,934, which is a 2.1% increase from last year. The cyber insurance was $1,860 last year. The required questionnaire for cyber insurance has been completed, and we should get our quote shortly. With the three funds, meaning General Fund, Water Fund, and Sewer Fund, we have a budget of $81,600, so we're off by about 1,300. So we'll need to do a small budget, budget adjustment, which I will propose once we get the cyber insurance quote. Regarding the sewer project, this would be phase one. Long-term financing for the no-interest $6,162,618 loan with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, or EFC, successfully closed on May 16, 2024. EFC paid off the village's USDA rural development $3,593,000 loan on May 20th. The interest rate for the USDA rural development loan was 1.875%. Final interest to the USDA rural development of $18,371.6 has been authorized to be paid. It is now on USDA to take the money. Our loan with EFC is for 30 years, with payments due annually on March 18th in the amount of $205,430. The USDA rural development December disbursement request revised in May, these are the formes that we send in, has been accepted. The money's been received and the invoices have been paid. The requested sewer-related items using the remaining contingency funds have been approved. We are in the process of acquiring those items. And I'm working on the final disbursement request to close out the project. And I am looking forward to that completion. The sewer expansion phase two, we do have a working group, a working sewer group that meets every two weeks to review both the ongoing operations and the phase two project. And I think Kim may have some comments as well. But we talked about the draft engineering report from Delaware Engineering for the sewer phase two expansion. I read all this in the resolution, so I won't keep going, I won't read it again. All right, that's all in the resolution. And then the town is simultaneously working through their procedure to establish a sewer district. And they are applying for a New York State intermunicipal grant. And we just approved the IMA after some discussion. Just to clarify, if it wasn't clear, the IMA was reviewed, vetted, and revised by Rich Olson, the village attorney, Robert Flores, our village engineer, and myself, ME. And we can make subsequent changes. Cookingham East, which is sometimes referred to as Red Hook Gateway. I attended the exciting announcement that RUBCO received the Momentum Fund grant of $3,450,000 for which they had applied last July to support the infrastructure for their proposed housing development in the village of Red Hook. Abraham's Task Force, and Steve, I know you've got a few words on this too, but the task force met on May 31st. Betsy Brower attended from Alaska via Zoom, where she is visiting some of her grandkids. Amy Perella and I were in attendance as well. Brent Cavalcas. Brent Kovalchuk joined us towards the end of the meeting. Betsy had previously shared a test version of the survey she has developed. She had taken six test responses. We discussed finalizing the survey and how to distribute it as widely as possible. And Mel Corca has been working on a flyer to help publicize the survey. We plan to translate the survey into Spanish and perhaps often offer a shortened version for youth. We are working out those final details now. So if you come across that survey and would like to make comments on Abraham's Park and what you'd like to see or not see in the park, please, please fill out the survey. We also discussed the parking lot. And we agreed that we would look into hiring a civil engineer to aid in the process of designing the parking lot, getting the proper permitting through DEC, and avoiding the wetlands for the much-needed parking lot. And that is on me to work on that RFP. The Union Contract Negotiations. The Union is... Oh, it's UPSU, and I don't remember what that all stands for, I apologize. That is our union for both the Police Department and the Highway Department. The Deputy Mayor and I both met with both the police and the highway, with their union representatives in May, two separate meetings. The village is in the process of reviewing the union proposals and preparing our next meeting in consultation with our labor attorney, David Weiss. WEA Water Projects. So we have three projects that we're working on under the Water Infrastructure Investment Act. That's what WEA stands for. The first one is the SCADA Controls Upgrade. The SCADA system is what controls our water system, communicates to the pumps, and keeps the system running smoothly. So this is a needed upgrade. This project is underway and is expected to be completed by the end of July. The SCADA system controls the water system, as I just said, and this upgrade will increase the efficiency of the system. Avanti Construction is the contractor. The cost for this project is four hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Cherry and Grave Street Water Main Replacement. This project began in mid-May, as some, as those who live in the area are very aware. The contractor is Amity Construction. Construction will continue through the end of June, then go on hiatus for July and August. Amity is due back September third to complete the project. Substantial completion is contracted to be December seventeen, 2024. The project began at the intersection of Cherry Street and Market Street. There's a lot of rock all along that section of Cherry Street. They are down around the corner, approaching Grave Street, and hopefully it will be, actually, we know it'll be easier going from there forward, having gotten through most of the rock. The cost, the total cost for this project is one million, three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. The final, final thing they do is paving. So they're going to need to be done probably before mid-December. Hopefully by early to mid-November for the final paving. And then the third project is the water tank rehabilitation. And this tank, this project will likely start sometime in July. The contractor is Worldwide Industries. The cost for this project is three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Completion is expected to be before the end of 2024 and likely well before that. I just don't have an updated schedule. And just to remind people, the water tank rehabilitation project is actually to do some work along the side of the tower, but primarily to paint the inside of the tower. So most of, most of the work will not be seen from, by all of us. It will be minimally disturbing for the folks in the neighborhood. And then I just had a couple of other items. I did want to say a public thank you to the Red Hook VFW Post 7765 for persevering in the face of nasty weather forecasts and hosting an important observance of Memorial Day with a parade and a powerful ceremony held back at the post. And we hope, hope we are able to return to ending the memorial in the park next year. I was invited by the Red Hook Rotary to be their guest speaker at their meeting on May fourteenth. It was a good opportunity to share some of the projects we are working on and to thank and compliment them on a wonderful Apple Blossom Day event. I also attended a New York Council of Mayors, also referred to as NICOM, conference at the Sagamore Resort from May fifteen to May seventeen. It was an excellent opportunity to trend many meetings and training sessions about all things villages and cities, as well as meeting with other mayors around the state. And then finally, the Senior Picnic for Rhinebeck, Red Hook, and Mylan is this Wednesday, June twelfth. You do need to register with the Office for the Aging. So if you haven't registered and you are over sixty years old, a resident, please call the Duchess County Office for the Aging, eight four five, four eight six, two five five five, to register. And I'll see you there. And that concludes my reports. Deputy Mayor.
Okay. Red Hook Together met on May ninth at noon at the Red Hook High School Performing Arts atrium. Various members of the Red Hook Central School District Administration presented their budget and ballot proposals. Conversation followed with multiple share-outs, and there was extended discussion around the then upcoming Apple Blossom Day. As of this report, the next meeting is on June sixth at the Community Center at noon. Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee. Bi-weekly meetings have been taking place at Village Hall on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month at eight forty a.m. I was unable to attend the May twenty-second meeting due to travel.
And I'll just add, I did attend that meeting, and my notes are in a pile, and I will, I will make a report and put it out at the next meeting.
Great. I should have reminded you, I'm sorry. A Village of Red Hook Communications Committee. The Communications Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at one thirty P.M. in the Village Hall Conference Room. This month's meeting was dedicated to discussing the upcoming seasonal services update, as well as analyzing if we can improve Village Hall's main door signage when the automatic hardware is updated. We discussed multiple ways we can improve the information that has provided the main entrance to be more welcoming and functional. We are also considering a series where we explain aspects of the Village of Red Hook's operations, rules, or procedures that people may find confusing and/or confounding from a user's perspective. If you have any suggestions of topics that you think you would like to know the why of, please reach out to the Communications Committee. Our committee's mission is devoted to exploring ways that the village can better communicate with constituents and our greater community in order to serve the public. I also extend that invitation to fellow trustees, as well as the various departments they work with. If there's a point of communication that you feel could be improved or clarified, we are happy to receive topic suggestions. Village of Red Hook Hardscrabble Events Committee. The Events Committee meets on the second Tuesday of each month at six P.M. at Village Hall. May thirty-first Neighbor's Night was our most attended event yet. Attended Neighbor's Night yet. A big thank you to the Highway Department for clearing the lot and setting up the tent and tables for our event. We also appreciate all the committee members and volunteers who helped to make the event possible. Our next and final Neighbor's Night of the year will be on September thirteenth and the night before Hardscrabble Day. The committee's May fourteenth meeting was spent finally finalizing details for May's Neighbor's Night, as well as discussing morning and afternoon entertainment for Hardscrabble. Sponsorship packets are available on hardscrabbleday.org. Please stay tuned for more details regarding the lineup and day of activities once those become finalized. The Hardscrabble Music Festival will be on September fourteenth this year. An easy way to remember is one, four, two, four. And you can follow social media for updates at facebook.com/hardscrabblerh and instagram.com/villageofrhevents. Note, the June eleventh meeting has been rescheduled for June seventeenth. The Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee. The Human Relations Committee meets every first Thursday of the month at seven P.M. in the Village Hall Conference Room. The committee met on May eighth and discussed next steps on the Indigenous History Project. We discussed a possible timeline that would allow us to present any proposed project to the village board. It was decided a committee member would reach out to local historian Bill Jeffway, who had collaborated with the village in 2021 on the You Are Here exhibit about the history of the Four Corners in the village. Jeffway recommended to that committee member that they reach out to another local historian who has more specific expertise. The committee's next meeting will have taken place on June sixth at seven P.M. in Village Hall. And I will include any updates from that meeting in next month's report. Also, our July fourth meeting has been moved to July, the following Monday. Which I think is July. I'll post it on the website. Realized I didn't write it down.
Oh, and so instead of July fourth, July eleventh?
Yeah, no, July eighth.
That's a Monday.
Yes, it's a Monday, I know. It's because we're not having our village board meeting on that day. So we weren't able to do that.
There you go.
So, yeah, sorry about that. Okay. Then the Village of Red Hook Highway Department. Street striping is slated to begin soon. The hydrant flushing is scheduled to take place mid to late June. Fire hydrant flushing is performed to remove any sediment or stagnant water from the distribution system and to test fire hydrant operation. You may experience temporary water discoloration or a pressure drop. This is normal and expected occurrence. If you notice any discoloration, your water is safe to drink, but we recommend that you run it for a few minutes until the water is clear. Village Brush and Yard Waste Pickup. Pickups are scheduled for the first full week of every month, pending weather conditions and scheduling. Residents are reminded of the following rules. Avoid creating long-term piles. Place piles out just prior to pickup week. Lawn clippings and brush should be set out in separate piles. Place piles on the edge of your lawn, not on the sidewalk or in the street. The piles should not include construction debris, garbage, stumps, and/or branches larger than six inches in diameter. Piles should be limited to six feet by six feet by six feet. And consider combining smaller piles with a neighbor to facilitate efficient pickups. Trash and recycling pickup. Please put your trash and recycling out before five a.m. on Monday mornings. And cardboard bundles should be bound together with string or tape. And paper recycling should be placed in a lidded container. Potholes. You can notify the Village of Potholes and Village Roads by calling the Village Clerk's Office or filling out the Report of Concern form at redhookvillage.org/concern. Please note that the village is not allowed to conduct repairs on state highways. If you would like to report a pothole on the state highway, the village can forward your concern or you can submit your complaint directly to the New York State DOT by calling one eight hundred POHOLE. Streetlight Complaints. If you notice a streetlight out, you may notify Central Hudson directly by going to centralhudson.com/EN/Adages and selecting Report a Streetlight and filling out their online form. And finally, the Scrap Metal Program. Revenue received since the last report on five twenty-nine twenty-four was five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Total revenue for this fiscal year, June 2023 through May 2024 to date, is six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy cents. Since the program's inception in September 2007, donations have yielded a total of fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Our estimated budget for scrap metal revenue, A2650, this year was five thousand, seven hundred.
If I can just interject, the original budget that we originally passed before any adjustments was actually forty-five hundred.
I apologize.
No, that's all right. We did budget adjustments because we kept getting scrap metal, which is great.
Which means the village received, also, we received even more than we expected. Well, I wrote nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy cents.
Five, seven hundred dollars more than that. So sixteen, eight, four, seventy.
In the scrap metal revenue for our past budget year. Proceeds from the program go towards the purchase of tools and equipment for the Public Works Department. Residents and businesses interested in donating scrap metal may contact the Village Clerk's Office to schedule a pickup. And that's it.
Awesome, thank you very much. Okay, next is Trustee Lang, who is not here. So I will, unless someone else was prepared to not see in it, I will, I will report on his monthly report. So Materials Management. In the month of May, the Village Highway Department collected 2.1 tons of recycling, 0.85 tons of comangled, 0.75 tons of cardboard, and 0.69 tons of paper. The village also collected 6.87 tons of garbage, which was transported to Elster County Resource Recovery Authority Agency. Sorry, good guess. Total cost of eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents, seven hundred and ninety dollars and five cents in tipping fees, and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents of fuel surcharge. The village also paid two hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-three cents in monthly fees for the use of the Welsh Dumpster Service. Over the course of the month, the village collected three thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars from the sale of garbage tags. Broken down as follows: two thousand, three hundred and seventeen at Village Hall, six hundred from Taste Buds, two hundred and ninety-four from the Red Hook Public Library. There is a water... So regarding the water treatment facilities. During the month of May, the water treatment facility treated seven million, six hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and eight total gallons, which is an average of two hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-five gallons per day. That is an increase from the prior several months and only a slight increase from last year for this month. All bacterial samples for the month were collected and transported... Since you're analytical, I think we're going to paste now. All came back with the correct answer, meaning the negative bacteria was all absent, which would be coliform and E. coli. Chemical usage during the month of May. The water treatment plant used seventy-five gallons of sodium hypochlorite. Average daily use was 2.4 gallons per day. Is anything else with that?
Earthquake, are you doing it?
Oh, for the water treatment facilities, yeah. There are a couple of things.
Okay. I won't stop you.
Okay. Salkill Watershed Community, just that there was no meeting. Community Preservation Fund Committee, no meetings in the month of May. And still no response from the town regarding future meeting dates and balance of Community Preservation Fund. And the Water Sewer Utility Bill Adjustments. We have that. Yes, I have that here. Utility bills issued in the month of May, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Penalties and finance charges issued, nine hundred dollars and sixty cents and seven... Nine hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-six cents. Utility payments received, forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Accounts receivable outstanding to the village as of May thirty-first, 2024, fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-four cents. And just for context, the most recent billing, our billing is done quarterly, was done in late March. And then for billing adjustments approved by Water Department and Mayor, one adjustment allowed. There were none. Yes, sorry, I was just reading and not thinking about what I was reading. There were no bill adjustments in the month of May. And that is the only other thing I wanted to look at for Charlie's report. Where's the contaminated piece? There it is. May, we had no contamination in the recycling, so good news. That's it, Charlie's reports.
Sorry. The comment that I was going to say is that we sold more garbage tags this year than the previous two years, which I think...
Yes and no. I'm not sure when we started capturing the Taste Bud sales. I'm not sure when, when... I was looking at that too.
Yeah, okay.
It wasn't... I'm not sure if it was captured back here. I'm sure it was captured this fiscal year. I'm not sure if it was all of this fiscal year.
Interesting. Okay, to be...
But I thought revenue went up, cost went down.
Yeah.
Are we still selling at Agway as well?
We are not currently selling at Agway. There's a new owner, and I am in discussion with him to start that up. So if anybody is missing your garbage tags at Agway, please let him know when you get there. Okay, that's it for Charlie. Trustee Kim.
Good evening. For the Village Green Committee, the current balance of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts at the end of May are as follows. The community beautification contractual expenses, there were none in the past month, so the balance remains at four hundred and forty dollars and three cents. For shade tree contractual expenses, we spent thirteen thousand, seven hundred... Ooh, that's a big old typo. Sorry about that.
The three is meant to be a period.
A period, yeah. Thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. And the Village Green Committee checking account balance is at nine thousand, six... And the Village Green Committee checking account balance is at $9,692.50. The Village Green Committee is working to diversify our tree population here in the village and boost our native tree species. In such, we hope to begin the long process of taking inventory of the trees. As mentioned in last month's report, the VGC attended a Bard intern fair in hopes of recruiting a Bard student for the summer, and we will be working with that student starting next week. The student will begin work toward the middle of the end of the month, and we will take many efforts, but the payoff will be much better for the environment and the future of our green canopy. As always, we are looking for more people to join our efforts. There are many opportunities to volunteer, whether directly helping with our inventory project, to media graphics, workshop development, and education materials. If you are interested in learning more about tree diversity and how that affects the health of the village, please reach out. And residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent village street or New York State Highway right of ways, volunteering for planting days, or sponsoring a beautification project, please consider reaching out to myself or Jen Kavanaugh. And meetings are open to the public, and we're actively seeking members for our community to join, so please reach out if you are interested.
And your next meeting is?
Our next meeting is going to be the second Sunday of the third quarter of the month, which is July something.
So it's in the month of July?
One, July.
And it's the second Saturday, did you say?
Second Sunday.
Second Sunday, so that'll be the 14th of July.
July 14th, thank you.
At what time?
6:00 PM. Here at Village Hall, upstairs.
Good. Thank you.
For the Sewer Department, we continue to work with the village engineer on the-
Oh, sorry, before you, before you move off the trees, I just want to say, for anyone who has a, has a tree that was planted by the village, it is actually something that needs watering, and we are looking to the residents to do the watering, so if you have a tree, you haven't been watering your tree, please do so. Go ahead, sorry.
No, you're good. The Sewer Department, we continue to work with the village engineer on planning of expansion phase two, and this work also includes discussion around servicing sewer to the town. There are many elements up in the air, but we have been zoning in our expanses in the phase one and potential need for phase two, so that we can accurately estimate the cost for the second phase. As a reminder to all residents, whether you are in the sewer use area or not, please be kind to your pipes and only put the three Ps in the toilet. And while you're in the kitchen or near other drains, no fats, oils, or grease, also known as fog, as they can clog up the pipe and make the system stressed out. What goes down your drain matters. If you are in your, if you are in a sewer use area and the emergency alarm goes off, please call the village sewer operator at 845-758-1081, press option 8. And then only silence the alarm after notifying the sewer operator, otherwise we have no idea your alarm is going off. And please do not open the box or tamper with village-owned equipment. Additionally, we are having inspection and maintenance of all sewer pumps and tanks will start after July 15th, so that means if you are in the sewer use area, all tanks need to be accessible, as well as the caps and the panels in the village for updates. Thank you. For the speed limit initiative, our engineers are looking over all the data for the second and third part of the study. However, in light of the recent tragedy and what appears to be excessive speeding lately, we're hoping to be able to move quickly on lowering the speed limit and bringing attention to the necessity of slowing down and abiding by posted speed and parking laws.
And I just would like to add, I should have mentioned this under the police report, following the tragic accident, we have increased our traffic patrols. It is a, it is a small thing we can do at this point to increase that. It's hard to be there 24/7. And it really was a tragic accident, and our, my heart goes out to the family of the, of the young woman who, who was killed. But we, we will continue to do everything we can to slow people down as they come in and travel around the village.
The Town of Red Hook Greenway and Trails Committee, representatives from the Winnicke Land Trust came to the meeting to discuss current projects. Furthermore, the Greenway and Trails Committee and Winnicke Land Trust are invited to Rotary's Breakfast Meeting on June 11th at Locavore, which is tomorrow. There was an update on the Sauk Hill Trails. The Blue Trail needed roots, roots cut, and it needed to be mapped out for the wetlands. And there is a permit for the fence, split rail fence to Aspen Wall, and the Winnicke Land Trust is designing and engineering a bridge on part of the trail. The next meeting is scheduled for June 13th, which is this Thursday. Climate Smart Communities, the village, the task force met, the task force met for the second time, and we're hitting the ground running. We have started our work on the assessment and figuring out where we are best positioned to work through the action items that support the village's endeavors in being more climate smart. We also had a discussion on partnering with the Public Spaces Initiative for their upcoming annual Hello Blooms Festival, which be held, which will be held at the Red Hook Community Center on Saturday, June 15th, that's this weekend. After a little discussion, the task force decided that it would be a great collaborative project, and so we'll be working with PSI to build joint programming that involves greening up the village and how that works with the Climate Smart Committee's actions for a healthy village climate. There are particular action items that speak directly to pollinators and creating education materials for our residents about, is a large component of the green track with climate smart communities. This task force is open and still recruiting. If you're interested in being involved and to express ideas and knowledge of the way to best move forward and working within the team, setting to build a pathway forward, we are interested in your input. And that is the end of my reports.
Thank you. All right, and trustee Evans.
Good evening. First off is the Village of Red Hook Building Department Monthly Report. There were 12 building permits issued, one certificate of occupancy was issued, and six certificates of compliance. There was one municipal search, and two orders to remedy, one at 64 Cambridge Drive for bees and 18 Prince Street property maintenance-related. There were no stop work orders, no do not occupy notices, and also no court appearances. There were seven complaints during the month, 7525 North Broadway related to noise, 64 Cambridge for bees, which was remedied, that was one of the orders mentioned above, 45-47 West Market, there was a fence issue which has since been remedied, 18 Prince Street dog barking was the issue there, 25 Fisk Street property maintenance, lawn was not mowed, 11 St. John, there was some burning, which was remedied, and 18 Prince Street, also in the orders to remedy above, there was that property maintenance lawn not mowed issue. There were five fire inspections during the month. All of the activity for the building department resulted in $1,730.10 in fees. The Planning Board met on May 16th. There were four items that were on the agenda. Signage was approved for 21 West Market Street, that's the Mega Brain Comic Store that recently opened. There was a site plan approval granted for Lofty, that's the business at 7536 North Broadway. A site plan and public hearing for St. John Street project was tabled for the June 13th meeting coming up later this week. And also tabled for that meeting on June 13th was a site plan and public hearing for South Broadway, the Upstate Pines project, much of which is in the town, but a small portion of that property does reside in the village. The Zoning Board of Appeals on May 23rd, there was an area variance granted to Fort Church Street for a fence going from four to five feet around the playground, and an area variance for 15 Church Street was tabled to the June 27th meeting, when a public hearing will be scheduled. For the Public Spaces Initiative, public meetings are held on the fourth Saturday of each month at 10:00 AM in person at Village Hall unless otherwise noted. The next meeting will be on June 22nd. And the fifth meeting of the year was held on 10:00 AM Saturday, May 25th, here at Village Hall. Key topics covered during that meeting, the Seed Library, which resides at the Red Community Center. Work is underway with community center leadership to relocate the library from the basement to a more accessible location in a nook under stairs on the first floor. Along with that move will be a redesign of the library to make it easier for folks to access, and there will be new signage to highlight that as well, and that's being created on a pro bono basis from a local artist. And ideally, I think the work is still on progress to be completed by June 15th for the Hello Blooms event. Abraham's Park, as part of the ongoing visioning and redesign work, and the mayor talked about the production of the survey that will capture public input. Again, just reiterating, you know, any and all input for ideas for the park is welcome and will be very helpful. And one of the ways the park, you know, may be used is for some kind of collaboration for a studio art program, and there's been initial discussions or reaching out to Bard College. There was an event last year, you know, very brief, but kind of testing out that concept. This has been a busy event period for the Public Spaces Initiative at both Apple Blossom Day on May 11th and the Historic Red, Then and Now event on June 1st. PSI members tabled at both events, which were well-attended. Many visitors stopped by, learning about the PSI and its mission and activities. Hello Blooms, as Kim had mentioned, that is coming up on this Saturday, the 15th, 11:30 to 2:30 at the community center. Hopefully, weather will be good, and activities will be held out of doors. Activities will include a giveaway of donated plants, informational tables, crafts for kids, and tours of the community center, pollinator garden, and seed library. And there will also be collaboration with Climate Smart Community Task Force, members of whom will be there to share information about this important village initiative. And the last major event for the year will be on October 19th, Pumpkins in the Park, Abraham's Park, and planning will start in earnest once the June events are finished. And then for a planning update, there's been a lot of activity, you know, I think the mayor talked a little bit about that. The firm of Nelson Pope and Voorhees has been hired to support the village in addressing zoning for the village gateway, the Cooking Camp East project, and that encourages and supports development while adhering to the overall character of the village. On the 23rd of May, the village board held a special workshop meeting, which was attended by Bonnie Franzen of NPV, the planning firm, and several members of the community, reviewing the initial draft report. That report is available to the public on the village website, and community input and comments are encouraged and welcomed. There will be additional forums, including at some point a public hearing capturing vital community input. And also, I think, as the mayor mentioned, RUPCA, which is the presumed developer, recently received notice from New York State that they were awarded a nearly $3.5 million Momentum Fund grant to support infrastructure on the site.
Great. And also, just to clarify, that May 23rd workshop was, was open to the public, and we were grateful for the community members who did come and attend. Next item on the agenda is general business. Does anybody have any general business items to add?
I just have a quick announcement. Two Saturdays, Village of Red Hook is co-sponsoring Pride Parade and Music Festival. The parade launches off at 10:00 AM from Linden Avenue Middle School, and will march down into the municipal out, where there will be a small music festival going until about 1:30 in the afternoon. So invite your friends and family. The local businesses will be supporting, some are doing special sales as well, so we hope you enjoy.
Great. Any other business, general business items during them? Take the opportunity for another public comment? Please state your name and for the record.
David Pearson, Mark Gavin. Two questions, can I have two questions?
Sure. You might not get any answers if you ask the questions.
Well, in reference to the, to the depth we had and the speeds in the village, is there anything new on moving to 25 miles per hour in village roads?
So the engineering firm that we have tasked with that, we're waiting on their next round of reports, but they have given their preliminary village road, village owned roads, which is non, non-Broadway and non-market and non-Linden, have been preliminary moved to 25 miles. We're just waiting on the secondary of getting state and county approval for that, as well as the school speed limit in front of the high school and Linden Avenue Middle School.
Yes, so just, just to, just to clarify, the report gives us their professional opinion and recommendation as to whether or not they believe that it is a good idea to go to the 25 mile an hour zone. We then have to follow up with the process. We are, we also will be looking at, and again, working with DOT, the possibility of putting at each entrance on the, the four entrances on state highways, the-
Solar speed signs?
Solar speed signs, yes, thank you, because I, I think those, those can be-
Be helpful, yes.
Another opportunity to, we're, we're looking at every way we can to slow people down.
So I know highway departments, when they change a sign, they oftentimes put the sign, the new sign, and they put it over a new top. So I think you should think about that. Like when we change the speed limit on Park, it has a 30 mile an hour speed, it'd be nice to say 25, new. My other question is, Park Avenue is a five, and most, all village roads are five ton limit, and I'm not exactly sure what that means. Does that mean weight per axle, or does it mean total weight of the whole vehicle going down? Because what I'm seeing on Park Avenue, for example, once in a while I see a tractor sheller, but what I see is a lot of pickup trucks with trailers, and sometimes they're carrying the equipment that's certainly five tons or more. And we have five ton limit signs on either end of Old Post Road and one at the other end of Park Avenue, which I requested. And so it should stop people from going on our road that's five tons or more, but they're doing it anyway. And that'd be nice to see more police presence on, on that issue. I'm gonna call the DOT and ask them what five tons means.
Point, point well taken. I was gonna say, I don't, I don't have an answer for you on that. Can certainly follow up. And just to clarify, it does allow for local delivery?
Oh, yeah.
Which is not necessarily what's happening, but-
Right.
Thank you. We have no executive session. I do need a motion to pay bills after audit. So moved, thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last chance?
Oh, I was just gonna say thank you to Kim for the reminder of Pride Parade.
You're welcome. And just to top that too, I do know that village trustees have been invited to march in the parade, as well as the general public, so if you are, please go to beckhookpride.com, and you can find the signup sheet there, in which you will be emailed confirmation and further information about where, when and where lineup is.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Hearing nothing further, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Wow, dragging it out of you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all.
That's a very quick process for the Planning Board, okay.